We'll call the meeting to order. And we'll start with Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you if you want to ask. I saw Mr. Hope just as the meeting started, so he's here on time, if that needs to be reflected anywhere. Um, before I start the roll call, I noticed a clerical error, um, listing that, uh, Mr. Daniel McGrath is still on commission, so, um, I'm going.
We're hopeful, I guess.
I'm going, well, I'm going to, um, read Ms. Atchison's name instead, so, uh, which strikes with A, so I'll start with you first, Ms. Atchison.
Here.
Um, Mr. Hall can't be here tonight, he spoke to me already, uh, Mr. Hope.
Present.
Mr. Merlington.
Present.
Uh, Ms. Napparowski.
Here.
Uh, Mr. Nixon.
Here.
And Mr. Conley is here. Uh, so, um, rec- recognized planning official, um, we just heard that we are going to be having Mr. Moore via Zoom tonight. Um, I'm not sure if he's there at the moment, but.
I am here, good evening.
Okay. And of course, we have Mr. Womack, City Manager, and Ms. Johnson, the City Clerk. Well, uh, next on the agenda, we have to approve the meeting, the minutes from the last meeting of July twelfth.
Make a motion that we approve those minutes.
Second. Any concerns on last meeting's minutes? Okay, well, then, all in favor of approving the minutes from July twelfth, please signify by aye.
Aye.
Okay, all opposed? The minutes are approved. Um, next, tonight's agenda, of course, uh, as I mentioned, there is a, a slight clerical error on tonight's agenda that, um, just replacing Mr. McGrath's name with, or with Ms. Atchison's name, and then, um, is there anything else that we need to address on tonight's agenda before we approve it? Then, all in favor of approving the agenda with, uh, the correct, uh, members listed, yes?
If I get a first or second on that?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? The agenda's approved. Um, next item is public comments, those citizens wishing to speak on agenda, and not agenda items will be allowed a maximum of four minutes each to address their concerns. It's the only time during the meeting that citizens are allowed to address the planning commission, please state your name and address for the record if you would like. Anyone in? Online? This clerk.
I did receive five letters of support, um, for the Jimmy John's proposed, uh, location.
Thank you. Hearing no public comment, we'll move on to, or no public comment beyond the, um, the aforementioned letters. Uh, we'll move on to number seven, conflicts of interest and ex parte communication inquiry, if there's been any of either you'd like to disclose before we move on, please feel free to do so. Hearing none, we've moved on to scheduled public hearings, which there are none. So the next on the agenda is, uh, number nine, site plan review, reviews. Uh, item A, uh, White Creek LLC, fourteen one eleven White Creek Avenue, Cedar Springs, the applicant is seeking special land just approval for a drive-through business. So, um, can you bring us up to speed, Mr. Womack, with where we are currently? Since the last time we met on this, and then we'll, um, I'm sure we'll have some comments from the applicants or some, some things to ask the applicants, and we'll go back and forth as needed.
Um, so you guys will recall that we had a, uh, sketch plan submitted for the last meeting. Uh, we now have a totally different sketch plan that's been submitted. I guess the basic comments would be that it's, it's nicer, it's a little bit more professionally done, but it's still not a great site plan. Um, but this is a limited site, I don't know if we're going to get a better site plan than what's been submitted. It's just, it's complicated with an already pre-existing, uh, drive-through on the site, and it's a fairly busy site to begin with. Um, a couple of things of note. My computer would behave. Um, I noticed that there's three new parking spaces that have been placed into the internal site circulation driveway, which extends to the north. Um, that should not there, uh, I drove past that site yesterday, and I discovered that there were parking spaces painted there anyways. And it really, um, if the planning commission wants to allow that for some reason, it would have to be subject to removal at some point to be property to the north that's, uh, developed. Um, I don't remember offhand, but I, I must remark, um, there should be stop signs on both of the travel lanes, both the drive-through lane and the bypass lane. Um, and I think it's appropriate on their map how one is further along than the other, it gives, uh, one vehicle the opportunity to see the vehicle ahead of it. That's well done. Uh, so if both of these lanes are stopped with a stop sign, uh, currently they're marked as right-hand turn only. If they're both stopped, I think you could probably allow one or both to have, um, either left or right-hand turns. They might want to mark that on the pavement. That's something I guess we discussed with the applicant. Uh, number four, uh, I see Jets Pizza delivery drivers are continuing to park in the driving lane closest to the building. Probably not permissible under the original site plan, and it could complicate things on this site plan if people are going to be continuing to try to make a left-hand turn there. Uh, I've also seen, uh, delivery parks there in the past. Uh, the extension of the barricade island does create a, uh, longer stacking distance, uh, but it also does tend to create a slightly awkward internal traffic route for vehicles trying to leave this site. Um, the second, uh, drive access driveway now kind of has the beginning of the drive-through on one side, and then vehicles trying to make a a right hand against traffic, uh, to go south there. Uh, I think that's just a necessity of how it's laid out, and like I said, it's not a great site plan, but it is better than the last one, and probably the best you're gonna get. Um, the submitted sketch plan does indicate that there's a loss of eleven regular parking spaces with the addition of one ADA spot. Might wish to require an asphalt painted line directing incoming traffic off the northern driveway. So in other words, if you're coming in off White Creek Avenue on the northern driveway, you might want to have a separating line which directs traffic to the rear of the building instead of making a left-hand turn there, because obviously now going against one-way traffic. There's an awkward turn-in angle, um, kind of right where the existing barricade island meets the building. Uh, it's about a six-foot section of concrete, kind of see the vehicle turning left there. I don't know if it's possible to shave that little section off to create a completely straight or maybe a longer turn-in angle. Um, but that is just a little weird, I don't think we'd really cause any problems unless you have an exceptionally long vehicle, uh, which then might cause problems with the rear end sticking out in traffic. Both the code enforcement officer and I have, uh, noticed we have, uh, vehicles, including delivery trucks, going the wrong way around the building, uh, entering from the Big B Coffee side and then exiting the north side. As a matter of fact, one of those vehicles almost collided with the code enforcement officer two days ago. So I don't know, uh, what can be done about that, but, you know, if we're going to be adding a significant amount of traffic to this site, we probably want to have some kind of written plan detailing how the property owner is going to deal with that. Same thing with the Jet's delivery drivers. Um, approval, any approval of this drive-through should indicate that is particular to this specific use and not specifically for other future uses, uh, which is known, you know, already, but it should be noted in this approval. Um, I don't know if the planning commission wants to address, uh, Jimmy John's delivery vehicles, but obviously if we're having delivery vehicle problems for other sites, um, we might want to have them indicate when their delivery vehicles are going to deliver to this site. Uh, signage is noted, um, both on the site plan, and they submitted a, uh, Jimmy John's signage book of some kind, those are not approved up through this process, so those will have to be approved up by the design administrator. And, uh, I guess my last note here is again, it's a better site plan, still not a good site plan, but I'm not sure you're going to get a perfect situation. I think it's probably approvable, but there's obviously some work that needs to be done, so continue. And, um, like we do with most site plans, uh, any site plan approval, I would ask that you give a preliminary approval subject to final approvals. Moore, did you catch all that?
Yes, I did, um, I generally, uh, agree with, uh, Mr. Womack's comments here, I think that, um, the site plan shown is an improvement over the previous one, we have similar concerns about the traffic flow. You know, obviously, southbound traffic, uh, on, on White Creek is all going to get funneled into that southern driveway. Um, and, you know, there's not going to be a way. So one of my concerns is that people turning in using the northerly driveway, you know, might be tempted to make that quick left-hand turn into the site where you have two lanes now going in the opposite direction. There's almost the room for another lane to facilitate that southbound traffic. Um, but I think that probably just makes things more complicated, because then you have, you're a northbound, and then another northbound or a southbound in between or something, and none of that really seems to work very well. So, um, overall, I think I share the same comments and concerns, um, as Mr. Womack does, I think this is better, I think it, um, you know, can work, but certainly there's, there is potential for just a kind of some awkward turning movements, some, you know, potential congestion issues if Jimmy John's gets busy, I know that they're, uh, their tagline or whatever is that they're really fast and it, it, uh, doing what they do, which is great. But, um, you know, typically the six oftentimes with fast food establishments, even the fastest ones, uh, can fall short. And so there is, obviously, it's always going to be some risk of traffic backing up farther than it shows on the plane here and and in causing those kinds, kinds of issues, so, um, overall, I agree, it's better, um, it's not perfect. We're not going to get perfect here with that drive-through in that particular spot, um, and that's just kind of due to the unique nature of the site and how it's laid out.
Mr. Moore, it's freaky fast, you almost got it.
I was close, I had the, I, I was right in, in principle, at least, I had the right theme in mind.
Judges, oh, never mind. Excuse me, thank you, thank you, Mr. Moore. Um, who would like to represent, uh, the applicant tonight to answer some of the questions we have here?
Hi there, my name's Dave Rapp, um, I work with Mike Murray, who's been, um, part of this process up to this point, but unfortunately, he's out of town, so I can answer some questions for you and also speak with these folks too.
Okay. Um, so, I'll, we've done my fellow planning commission members first, if you have any questions, I have some, but I want to make sure that I hear from you all. Yes, Ms. Atchison.
Um, so, is there a, I guess this question is for Mike, is there a do not enter sign to not go around the Big B way?
There is, um, it probably could be strengthened. Um, I guess I'd like to think optimistically when you put a sign out there that people will see it and, you know, follow it.
Right, yeah, so something we gotta do there, also then at the other, where the stop is, um, this, the one-way.
On, on the northeast side of the.
Yeah, so, you know, what else can we do different there so that people won't enter that?
So I, I don't think I see a stop sign delineated here or a mark here.
No, where, where they're gonna exit the drive-through.
Northeast side, it says, says quote-unquote, "stop" and a right turn only signage, um, if anything, I'd have stop on both sides.
Yeah, but what will have you, a do not enter sign there too?
Uh, it, it, it does say one-way and do not enter signage on the facing the north side.
Okay, so, we all know that, that, um, they park against that building all the time. And I know that we did get a, um, some of the letters were from some of the, the, um, people that have stores in there. I think we need something from the mall owner that, like you said, that is gonna make sure that these people quit parking back there. Because I know we have that drive-through lane now all kind of painted in for Big B, but people can't go in that drive-through lane because there's people parked there. And I mean, I've myself seen it, have seen it since our last meeting repeatedly happen, so I think that we're gonna probably look for some assurances that those can please not be there.
Sure, yeah, you know, and Ed's here who owns the, owns the strip center.
Okay.
And, um, you know, the, the property's under new ownership as of, um, last year, so, you know, there's, it was kind of in transition for a period of time, so it's just a function of, you know, changing, yeah, changing people's patterns and letting them know you just can't park all over the place, so it's, it's gonna be a bit of a process, I think, to, to change those patterns.
I think that's it.
Any questions?
I do, I do kind of like, um, I did like Mike's suggestion about the, uh, two-way, um, parking or two-way turning when you come out of the drive-through there, because people might want to go to Jimmy John's and then turn to go to Big B. So I do think that would be beneficial, uh, for them to be able to turn both ways.
So if I could speak on that just for a half a second, so, do you have a bypass lane and then you have the drive-through lane?
Mm-hmm.
My suspicion is if you're in the drive-through lane of the Jimmy John's, you're probably not going to want to go to the Big B. But if you're in the bypass lane, that might be somebody who has, you know, in the past gone up that way and then made the left-hand turn to go around the building. So I'm just a little concerned that we do, um, both-way arrows on both the drive-through exit and the bypass lane. Now you're gonna be shunting people around the building after the exit of Jimmy John's drive-through, um, which is probably not what they want to do, they probably want to exit immediately hard right to White Creek Avenue. But the bypass lane, uh, I suspect you're gonna have people coming up there and wanting to make a left-hand turn. Um, but there's also the possibility they want to make a right-hand turn. So I don't know if the board has an opinion one way or the other. I think if both lanes are stopped at that location, they're probably gonna be able to make a left or right-hand turn either way. It's more about confusing the drive-through lane people than anything else.
I wasn't, I, I wasn't, I was thinking with the, uh, bypass lane, I was thinking that would be right-hand turn only, but the drive-through lane, you could pick to go if you wanted to go, like, through Big B or something. Like if you were picking stuff up for work or something for people at work, for lunch or something.
I guess I just think if you're in the drive-through lane for Jimmy John's, it's probably lunchtime where Big B's normally morning.
You, as I be.
Yeah, I would rather have it, that, that bypass line not turn left. Not be able to turn left.
You're fearful of them crossing over the drive-through.
Yeah, yeah, and they'll get used to it, I mean, pretty soon they'll know they can't, if they want to come, they'll have to go the other way, you know? And there's a, a lane out here too, so.
Well, just in response to that, if I were the Big B Coffee owner, I would say now you're making my customers entering, you know, the northern drive-through only. Now, if anyone has approached that drive-through on White Creek Avenue, um, the lane actually narrows there, and there isn't a left-hand turn lane. Now, eventually there will be, because, um, probably the apartment complexes near the party.
Right.
But right now, you're kind of like sitting in the middle of a lane of traffic, trying to make a left-hand turn lane in there.
I just, I don't know, I guess I know what I would do, and I wouldn't try to make a left-hand turn there.
We could also leave it, you know, unmarked. What we would do.
Yeah.
And require, you know, potential painting at a future date.
I personally, again, we are up, we all can have different opinions on this, but for me, for safety's sake, I'd like to make this as simple as possible, and that there's essentially a counterclockwise pattern that's not interrupted. So, um, you can, you can go counterclockwise around the building, um, it's one way wherever possible to make that happen, and that would include no left turns around that northeast corner, um, because because of the traffic coming in off the right. Um, if it were completely up to me, there would be a barrier stopping you from turning left that extends out into the southern part of that northern lane there, so that no one can go backwards against the flow of traffic. And that, that would guide you out onto White Creek from that point if you were leaving Jimmy John's.
And that is something we did discuss, but obviously it's a additional cost and.
And that's, and I mean, that's not on the plan that's in front of me. I'm, and I'm not saying that I would live or die on that, but for me, the simplicity of we're going around this building this way in all circumstances, uh, helps mitigate the otherwise, some of the complexity goes on with the traffic pattern in general in this building. But I, we're having a lot of discussion, and we're not bringing in the people that were, that I have up here that we wanted to ask questions of, so.
Yeah.
Um.
I'm gonna make them awkwardly stand there for the.
Exactly.
Well, and I would, I would just add too, I mean, I mean, this, this center's local in nature, right? So I think most of the people that go to it are, are local residents. So I think people over time again learn their patterns, and so as things change here, I think people are gonna recognize that the pattern has changed now in the, in the counterclockwise motion with the Big B uh, and the backside of the building, I think people are gonna eventually figure out that this is the way things have to go, and if the signage is in place, then, you know, and there's, you know, an owner that's enforcing these things, and the parking's starting to get, you know, figured out, it's just gonna take some time to kind of alleviate all that.
I'm actually less concerned with the locals than I am with the Friday traffic going out of town.
But that's a lot of one.
That's what a lot of the business is gonna be, just based upon the way all of our other restaurants are.
Yep.
The, there, I know that Mr. Ludwig had something he wanted to show us, we can. Did I say your name correctly, I'm sorry, I just, I didn't want to mispronounce it.
My, my name is Ed Ludwig, and I did purchase the property back in December of two thousand twenty-one. Um, it's been a unique property to take care of, I've had a very good contact with all my tenants there, and yes, you are correct about the side going north. However, uh, there was never lines painted there before I bought it, I put the lines just as you, you pull in there from the credit union all the way to the back, and it turns, so people know, and those are twelve-foot lanes, that's more than adequate for a lane. So if somebody's parking in those spots, I don't know if it's a pickup truck or what, but I've been there many, many times, and I, I measured it myself, that's why when the guy put those lines in there, we did them twelve foot apart, you know, maybe eleven, eleven-eight or something like that, really close to it. I, I fortunately, I had an operation, so I didn't go to my property for a couple of weeks. This will happen today, I did go to the, um, the dentist office, the dentist office, they fill those fifteen spots. I asked them, moving forward, can you guys please park on that, uh, on the map here, would be facing the highway, so it would be on the west side, there's twenty spots there. And if you are doing drive-throughs, which you do, and everybody does, you guys know, nobody's parking there, am I correct? So I did ask my tenants today if they can start parking back there, especially the dentist, because of the dentist might have ten or twelve people, and then they're filling that up by eight-thirty in the morning. So I did ask them today, can you guys please, um, start parking in the back there? And the dentist office, Nicole, she just started managing the place, she said, no problem, sorry if we created any problems, so I've been trying to do my due diligence to, to get stuff done there. And I want to go on record too, since I bought this property, I maintain it very well. I got parking lot signs repainted, I put park, or handicap signs in there, I've worked with all my tenants if they had problems, and I talked to the florist lady today about her parking there, she goes, Ed, I've got to fill up my van with, with stuff. That's where she parks, I get it, I, I don't want to be the parking lot police to go to every tenant. And I did talk to Jets Pizza, which they did write a letter. Jets Pizza's really busy on Friday nights, they have six delivery people, they all park in the back. But when they park in the back on Friday night, the dentist office is completely gone. So we're, we're dealing with real busy, and about an hour break, and then Jets Pizza gets rid. So I've personally talked to all, all the businesses there, and I have seen Cisco going the, the wrong way. I'm not, like I said, I'm not the police of, of the parking lot, I don't know how to call Cisco or get with my, my tenant and say, hey, you guys can't do that, I didn't stop what I was doing and go tell them, but I'm trying to do my due diligence with all my tenants there. And I think I got a really good mix of people, um, nobody is complaining about the parking lot in front with the people. We have buses that park in that lot, I don't go to the buses and say, get the heck out of my lot. We have trucks in there all the time, we have campers in there. They, they are not coming to use my facility unless they get a pizza at Jets, and then off they go. They're, they're going to Kentucky Fried Chicken, Wendy's, you know, if, if they're going up north, so, um, that's about all I have to say, and, and I am working with all my tenants all the time on this property.
Thank you for that, we know that you can't police it, we don't expect you to sit out there in your car twenty-four-seven and make sure everyone's doing what they're supposed to. This would be more from a design point of view.
Right.
Can we do, um, working together to make it less likely for people to do dangerous things?
Uh, tha- that's why I did paint the lines behind the building for Big, Big B, it was never there before. I mean, so I, I did that about two months ago, you know, it cost me three hundred bucks, but I, I did that to try to keep the flow going, so everybody can stay to the left, and yes, there are delivery trucks there. I can't tell Jets Pizza, they have two deliveries a week when they come to the back. I, I can't tell my tenant when they can have a delivery or not, and I can't tell the florist lady, oh, you can't come by the back door for you guys to make a delivery, I mean, I, I just can't do that, so.
Would it be possible though for you to, um, get the city as part of this, applicator as part of this, um, site plan, um, something written along the lines of what you're saying here, as far as, here's what, here's what we, I've worked out with my tenants as to where they should park, where they shouldn't park.
I, I'll, I'll give you a little history, I own nine commercial properties, I've tried to do that at a very busy, um, situation, much busier than this location. I even drew it on a map, there's a subway in there, there's a gym in there, there's probably twenty-five employees that work in this strip mall. I put it on a map, and I said, can you guys please park on the farthest west side, so we have more traffic? It was right in the trash, and, and I, I'm, I'm asking them all the time, we got all this parking, can you guys please park? I can do that.
Right, if you, if you can do that, then the city has an, at least an enforcement mechanism that you were supposed to park here, you're not parking here the way you are, for the future, then.
Yeah, I, I have.
That would be nice if we.
I, I have, I have no problem, because I got a great rapport with everybody over there, and, and I guess that's what I want to say. I think with my rapport that I have with everybody, I think we can make this work. Uh, I mean, I live here in town, I'm not a developer from a different city, I know everybody over there personally. When Met's Cafe got broken into at six o'clock and, or excuse me, they got broken into at six o'clock in the morning, I was over there ordering up, up the, the window. Um, so I have no problem, you know, asking to do this and do that, but then I can only do so much, you know?
Right, this is, yeah, we're not asking you for enforcement, that, in the end, that's the city.
Right.
It's, we're just asking for design and assurances.
Okay, uh, any other questions, I mean?
What? Going by there at night, the lighting situation, um, right there, are you gonna put up any other lights for that drive-through lane or brighten it up any at all, or?
Oh, it's, I did put more lights on the back of the building.
Hmm.
And all the lights around it, they're like the canopy of the building, every one of those lights are working, I just was there about three weeks ago, changed all the light bulbs, and in the parking lot, there's four LED lights. I believe they're adequate, they're, um, if Jimmy John's goes in there and we have to add two or three lights on the the west side of the building, or excuse me, the east side of the building, I can, we can add them.
Okay.
Because I did add two lights, LED lights on the back of the building, back in, uh, probably May. Because the lady at the pharmacy said, hey, it's a little dark, hey, no problem, I'm on it, got it done, so. And if you drive by there at ten-thirty at night, you can see that I put more lights back there, but if I have to put a couple more lights in there on the Jimmy John's side, no problem, it's a done deal.
Mr. Nixon, are you saying that the lighting on the side of the building where the drive-through would be is not currently adequate?
No, I was just making sure that it was, I, I.
Because I, I don't drive past it very often at night.
I don't drive past it very often at night either, so I want to make sure that we have it lit up very well. But the Jimmy John's. Very well. But the Jimmy John's guys, I don't know what they need for a drive-through. Or what anybody really needs for a drive-through.
I, I can tell you where the, the credit union is right now. Um, I think, and, and I don't want to pry into their business. I think they have a couple of lights out on purpose. Because it's a drive-through and then when the lights come on, they can't see, you know, because they have the ATM machine there. Um, and those, I mean, I try to mess with them. Nothing happens. So I just stopped doing it. So, but we can add more lights. And just, uh, another note, um, once I bought the property, I, I did put, uh, security cameras outside and I, the. And county sheriff has access to that twenty-four seven. And they did, um. Review it when we had the robbery at the Mets Cafe. So. I've, I've tried to do the best job I could with getting everything done up there. Everything that I've asked from the city, it has been done. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, I wanted to go through and make sure that. You know, we've, we've got answers one way or the other, or addressed all the items that Mr. Womack brought up. Sufficiently. So I'm curious about the parking spaces that you mentioned, the three new parking spaces that were striped. It, it's unclear to me, is that on the same parcel as the? Is, is the mall or is, is that going over a borderline? I'm kind of curious.
I'll bring it up on a map, but.
On the end of the, where the new ones are?
And I assume that's designed for when the northern lot is developed as better. Cause I'm on Google Earth right now. There's a car parked in there on the map.
Now I get it.
On the Google Earth picture. I always look at Google Earth. Yeah, I know. I see a car there and I'm just curious like.
It's about halfway through and the parking spaces that have been painted there are on the other.
Right straight ahead from where the drive.
But a- as you guys know, because we do this, uh, that's supposed to be an internal pass through to the northern lot. It should not be parking spaces.
That's the reason why if once it's developed, it can't be parking anymore because it's going to be a pass through. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, um, can we get a consensus from the planning commission about? Um, turning at the northeast corner there? Is it, do we want just both lanes turning to the right? Or do we want to allow for the possibility of one of the lanes?
I feel that we can let people make a decision here. I mean, I don't think we need to control that much. Well, um, I do think we need to think about where people are stopping, right? So they can see each other if somebody is hanging a left or a right there. I want to make sure they're conscious and they can see the other car side by side. Especially if that bypass lane is hanging a left and somebody's coming out of that drive-through. That's the only time I can see that we have. An issue, but I really hope that people are paying attention to each other. Cause we cannot take the human element out of this completely, right? You know, I mean, we can do our best, but. I hope people look left and right if they're gonna, depending on where they're going to turn, right? I don't really care if those arrows are there. I would like to see the Jimmy John's maybe go right, um, out of there, but. To me, it's not a hill to die on. Yeah. I think this is way better than we had in the past. I like this. Um, much better than when we saw last month. And I honestly don't really care about those arrows. I hope that people just pay attention. I think we should be. Thoughtful about where that stopping is and the fact that it's one way, I think it's good.
So maybe another way to ask this then, unless I don't want to talk over anyone, but maybe another way to ask this is, are we okay with those arrows as they are?
Add one small thing. So if you guys are looking at the actual, uh, site plan. You have an arrow coming in off of White Creek, uh, pointing to the west. Um, what I'd like to see at minimum is have a thick painted line on the asphalt between those two arrows. That then meets up with the, uh, one-way traffic that goes behind the building. That way you're preventing people from that left turn south. And you're notifying the people in the drive-through and the bypass lane, hey, here is where you're expecting traffic to come in.
Does that work for us? So, so that's, that's another thing knocked out of the way here.
And I, you know, go back to what Mike said, the, the stop signs, they should definitely be staggered, like the bypass lane should be stopping before the drive-through lane to give.
Yeah.
Going left though, I mean, I think if the stop signs are staggered, it gives people that option to go left if they want to go left.
But do we really want to have the bypass lane trying to turn left across the? Uh, drive-through lane? Cause I think the bypass lane could just turn right, but the. Drive-through lane could either go left or right.
I just feel like it's the bypass lane that's going to want to go left.
I agree.
Oh, Mr. Nixon, you're entirely correct. It's a very awkward turning movement, but we're also talking about like two or three miles per hour leaving a stop sign.
It should be stopped.
And I also think there's going to be different times here. Big B is obviously going to be busy in the morning. Jimmy John's doesn't serve breakfast, not yet, right? My, my. I'll take some freaky fast breakfast.
My biggest concern is the traffic coming in off White Creek Avenue.
Okay.
You're both correct about everything.
It's uncomfortable leaving it as it is with the two. As the plan, if someone decides to turn left, you know. Turn left. Exactly. And then if it's important to them enough that, that they go to Big B after they go to Jimmy John's. Or whatever, they'll turn left.
So Mr. Conley also bring up a good point, which is you can paint as many signs as you want, but people are going to do what they're going to do. And they get into a crash, we can at least say, well, ignore the.
Which is why I'm stopping short of my earlier possibility of requiring an island there that would stop people from turning left.
Right.
Right.
I don't think we need that.
No.
So basically. I'll give them that. I'll give people the freedom to screw up there, um, rather than, rather than force the hand.
So just the stop signs then?
Yeah, I think that's.
Well, the, well, the one-way arrows though too.
Well, we have the arrows in there and I think, yeah, I think a staggered stop sign is fine. I don't think the arrows in my mind are required. As long as they understand that that road, the bypass is one-way only, as long as it's clearly marked. But then no entry on the one side stops, staggered stop signs.
Yeah.
I'm happy there. I don't need those right-hand.
Yeah.
It's approved for some, for me personally.
I agree.
I think so.
Then, um, let me make sure I'm keeping, getting, keeping all these points, um, in place. Uh, so we, we talked about, uh, submitting a written plan for whether or not people follow it. Just, here's where you're supposed to park. And, and is, if we have a written plan for that, then at least we can.
And deliveries.
And, and deliveries as well. So here's where delivery should happen. Here's where parking should happen. We know people won't always follow the rules, but. We can act upon that in the future if we have.
Are you guys, uh, okay and satisfied with the, uh, extension of the parking island to create the extended, uh, stacking distance?
I am.
Yes. Honestly worked better than I thought it would. Um, I thought it would be worse, but I like the addition of the ADA spot and the ramp there. That's, that's allowed when, with this extension here. Um, it's not, again, it's going to be tight in there, but. This is not the only tight traffic flow I've ever seen around a restaurant or a mall before. Suboptimal, but this is what we've got if we're going to approve it. I, we have the right to not approve it. But I don't know that we're going to get much better.
No, I don't think I answered my question. I'd look closer.
I was just looking a little closer. Is kidnapping straightened at all? The point that Mike brought up? To where that doesn't bump out here? Is, is that just because of the sidewalk that goes past the building?
Uh, I'm Jerry with Jimmy John's, Jerry Heath. Um, I think it looks. More so than it really is. There is a little bump out, but it's maybe a foot. Something with the way the curb was put in, it almost looked like something that was added later, maybe. Maybe when the building wasn't built, but they, when they added the bank to it or, or however that worked. But it's not, it, that looks, looks a lot worse than it really is.
The lines make it look.
I, and I just had one question if I could, um, with the stop signs, um, with the drive-through lane. Right now, I'm not showing any stop sign. My thought on that was, let's just keep those people moving. Uh, the people on the right would stop and go when they could. You, do you want a stop sign in the, on the drive-through lane?
There's a conflict with the traffic coming off White Creek Avenue.
Yeah, that's, that's the part where you just want to make sure people are coming in. So that would be, I see that if they're coming in, right, if someone's exiting, that's my concern.
That would almost have to be mounted on the building. So that's what you would want for that.
However, yeah, how, yeah, I mean, you could work with the zoning administrator about how to mount it.
I think I'd be open to maybe a yield to traffic from right or some other option. If, if the concern of stopping is going to slow things down, but. I mean, it's something visual to warn people.
I think I agree. A yield or a stop sign would be. One that makes people stop and think for a split second. I think it's good.
Yeah.
Okay, um, about the parking spaces. So yeah, obviously we have to lose parking spaces to make this happen. And we know that this, this mall has parking all around it. So there are many parking spaces. But does the loss of parking spaces trigger any, um? Insufficiency for the amount of square feet that we have for this building?
Well, so we haven't generally asked for a formal, uh, parking plan on these types of strip malls because they do have a significant amount of parking. Um, I am, uh, heartened to hear that Mr. Ludwig has, uh, I guess informed. Uh, his tenants that the westernmost parking, uh, should be utilized because it is always empty. Um, now the only possible downside to that is, uh, the code enforcement officer and I. Um, have seen delivery vehicles going the wrong way through there and the only way to dodge them is to go into where the parking area is. So obviously if that is filled with parking, you know, parked cars, now you're going to have, uh, you know, conflict and there's no way to resolve it. Um, so if the delivery vehicles are no longer going the wrong way through. Um, and they're utilizing those spots back there, I think that significantly improves the use of the site.
Um, I'm going to make comment and then I'm going to recognize you, Mr. Ludwig. Ludwig, um, the, if it was properly. And I don't know exactly what there is at the moment that shows, you know, do not enter from that direction. But assuming that we had proper signage that said, do not enter this direction. And there were cars parked along there to, just to me, just like in a city street, uh, uh, when you see cars parked along the side of the road, it kind of informs you that. This is a narrow lane. I should slow down. Um, if people were parked over there. It may look less inviting for a person to drive a delivery truck up through there because it's a narrower. Um, visual field for them to navigate.
Yeah. The problem is you can't see around the corner coming up through there. Um, so I think we probably need just a little additional signage or something there and maybe a one-way arrow on the pavement. Pointing the other way. Obviously our fear is Big B traffic, um, exit drive-through. It's a vehicle coming the other way.
And again, we can, we can work with the zoning administrator to make sure that. We have that signage in place as, you know, as a condition of the approval. Um. Instead of necessarily saying, here's exactly what the signs need to be at this moment. Uh, but I want to recognize Mr. Ludwig because I said that I would. Did you show the bus?
Um, right after I purchased the property back in December, I had a little problem with the, uh, trash company. Because Big B Coffee is busy in the morning. The trash company was trying to come like at seven, eight, nine o'clock in the morning. So he can't turn in there and get the trash out because there's all these cars parked there. So Arrow Waste wasn't going to work with me. Ha ha, no problem. I went with, uh, Republic. They guarantee me they'll be there at five thirty in the morning. I, I took care of that problem. Now maybe I can reach out to Cisco or whoever their drivers are for delivery, especially just at Big B. Uh, and see if they can do their deliveries real early in the morning. And that could help that, that problem. So I did solve that problem with the, the, um, with the trucks. And they're quite upset with me. Well, why are you switching? Because Republic is right up here in Pearson. They come in. And off, off they go. So I want you guys to know that I took care of that problem right away.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, so there is anything that we need to address specifically as an action of the planning commission to approve the la- the, the, um. The last parking available?
I don't think so. I mean, it's generally discussion of whether you think the remaining parking is adequate.
I believe so.
A lot of parking here.
Yeah, and again, if that western parking was utilized, that would.
Yeah, yeah. And he put a ramp in, which I think is amazing. So that, that to me is, I like that.
You need the new ADA ramps to the Jimmy John's?
Um, we just, we addressed the asphalt line. Across the northern, um, driveway. And. When we turn. And we just talked about the southwest corner of the property.
Did we finish talking about? So with losing the parking spaces, we're okay with the barricade, right? Or though?
That's, are we? I mean, that's the, it is, is, if there's something that you want that, that you're curious about, we should bring it up. That's why.
No, I was just double checking that that covered. When we were talking about the parking, that covered the barricade too. That, we didn't need to go in and say, we're okay with the barricade.
Which, again, which, what do you mean by barricade? I want to make sure I'm talking, we're on the same page here.
That one right there.
Oh, the, the extension of the, yes.
Yeah.
Of, of the, um, right, the definition of the drive-through lane. That everyone's comfortable with that.
Yeah.
And as long as we're at it, it, I, again, it's, um, it'd be great if we had limitless stacking. But does the amount of stacking that we see here seem to be adequate?
I think so.
I think so.
Yeah, one, one thing is, um, Mr. Murlington and I were talking about this earlier this morning. Uh, if you come to a line and you see there's six or seven cars waiting already, I think the natural tendency is going to be, I'll come back later. I'll park, I'll go inside. Hopefully there's not going to be eighteen cars all deciding to get in line at one time.
And at those times when there are eighteen cars, well, you know, that is a big visual cue. Guess I better slow down because this is a tangled mess. I mean, most people don't barrel through that. I mean, it's not farmer's market or anything, so. That was a bad joke. Moving on.
So Mr. Conley, just one more very minor thing. So. The site plan came about a little oddly. Normally it is not the property owner who submits the application. It's almost always the developer who submits the application. Um, so just to make sure that everybody's on the same page, I would like both the property owner and developer to. Believe to the final site plan. Uh, that way we can, uh, hold both parties and bind them to it.
So, and, yeah, through some written mechanism, I'm assuming.
Yeah, so the, the, Mr. Heath, the Jimmy John's would have to submit something on their letterhead saying, we agree with the final site plan. Either way, just.
Yeah, yeah. It's, it's, as long as the city has what it needs legally, I mean, that's, I mean, to me, that sounds like, uh.
Reasonable.
Reasonable, but I mean, uh, 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 a, um, yeah, whatever. Move on. You, you gave me a better word than I could find. So how about that? Okay, anything else?
I, no. I think it, I think we've covered.
Um. This motion I could see being particularly challenging.
Thankfully, we have a great clerk who I'm sure wrote down every single word. And obviously these meetings are recorded.
Um, trying to delineate exactly what changes we're talking about here. So.
You want me to turn?
Um, Sheriff, you're feeling, you're feeling up to it. Go for it.
So I make a motion to prove the new site plan.
And special land use.
And special land use. Uh, reporting. To the developers. I mean.
They submitted sketch plan?
They submitted sketch plan from the owner. Per that. The three parking spots indicated to the north. East side of the building not be used.
Want them to be removed or you want them to be removed if the parcel in the north is developed?
Uh, to be removed if the parcel to the north is developed. That sound good?
Hmm, yeah, are you, is there more to your motion that I want to?
Mm-hmm, okay. I'll just double check in with that.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Um, there should be stop signs on both lanes. Uh, the bypass lane and the. Drive-through lane.
Next one would be open to alternative signs other than stop.
Yes, or yield. Or. Other signs that can get the public's attention. Staggered, yes. Also, the extension. Also, the extension uh of the island. And the eleven parking spaces lost with the addition of the ADA ramp. Uh, is required to submit. Required, as submitted by the sketch plan. Um, also, a full paint line. Needs to be painted from White Creek Avenue to butt up to the one-way traffic solid line. Uh, on the north end of the property.
About a submission of a written plan by the property owner to deal with uh, delivery trucks and delivery vehicles?
A written plan by the property owner.
To deal with delivery vehicles and.
To deal with vehicles, delivery vehicles. And commercial vehicles that will use the property. Is that correct?
I think the zoning administrator will figure it out.
Okay.
Uh, do you want the property owner to address the no entry sign?
I was just about to say that, um, also, put in, I think we ought to have like. Two no entry signs behind Holst Jepson.
Um, I would leave that up to the zoning administrator exactly.
Or.
To be signed as long as we indicate there's a need.
That, that's true, there is a need for signage, um.
Indicating.
On the southwest, southwest corner of the building indicating no entry.
Thank you, Ms. Atkinson. Written letter?
Yes.
Is there an agreement?
Subject to a written agreement by both parties, the franchisee and the landowner. Agreeing to the final site plan.
Yep, I think that addresses all one.
I'll second it.
Second, yeah. Um, I want to give the opportunity for discussion on this, but there's a couple things I want to address, because I might be making an amendment. Based on that.
I have the motion.
Okay, so I might be amending it based upon what we come up with the, in the discussion. Um, did you, um. You'd mentioned earlier, Mr. Womack, needing an indication that this, that this approval is. For this use only and not for future uses.
That is required under the law anyways, but there was discussion previously about, well, there's already an existing drive-through, therefore we should be able to use it for this use. Which is not true, um, but it should be at least noted.
Well, I'm, it, I guess that means to me it's not rising to the level of amending the motion for it, but just making.
Not necessarily, uh, we could address that as part of the final site plan approval.
And then the other thing, um, we mentioned that, um, we wanted a written plan on how. Uh, the deliveries would be done, but we didn't mention in the, in the motion how the parking would be done. So I would probably want to amend the motions that our written plan from the owner also includes. Their plan for parking for the employees.
And delivery drivers.
Well, we had, we had the delivery traffic aspect handled, but I didn't know that we handled the actual parking aspect.
So, Mr. Nixon, would you amend your motion to improve that?
Yes. I'll second again.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor of approving the motion, please signify with a aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion's approved. Thank you. Okay. Let me find my agenda here again, I buried it under the supporting materials. Um, so that moves on to other business item ten, uh, ten A. Is review and discuss the proposed industrial building facade requirements ordinance, I think I know how this one's gonna go.
Yep, so, uh, Mr. Moore, how you doing, buddy?
Uh, I'm doing just fine, uh, unfortunately, I did not have the time that I had anticipated during the month of July to work on this. Uh, but it will have my attention moving forward.
Sure, and I, I would repeat the same, I, I've been extremely busy, um, you know, I think we've got a good base here, it shouldn't take. Eighteen months like certain fence ordinances uh to finish up, but uh, yeah, we just didn't have it ready for this one.
Being short of eighteen, it's, it's probably for improvement, right?
We'll shoot for seventeen and a half then.
Okay, there we go.
With that, he's uh making a special meeting just for you guys at the half.
So, moving on then, um, item ten B, uh, review and discuss the minimum maximum parking requirements in the zoning ordinance for commercial industrial uses. Anything new on that?
Same thing, it, it's, it's actually a very minor modification, um, because in previous discussion, I, I think we're. Pretty much obligated to have a guideline for how many parking spaces you would require for whatever used. Um, but the real change here is, uh, one of the ordinances basically says, well, it's up to the planning commission. I'd like to strengthen that language just for legal purposes, that instead of saying, well, it's up to the planning commission. So we say, well, can be modified based upon blah, 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 blah. Um, so it's, it's a minor change, we just didn't have time.
Okay. Um, the next item was discussion, item C, a discussion on child daycare centers policy?
Yeah, so, uh, I apologize for this, this is significantly more complicated than I originally thought it was gonna be. Uh, so basically, what we have here is we have the city's, um. Let's say zoning ordinance regarding uh state licensed care centers. We have the home occupations ordinance, then we have the zoning enabling act, which is state law. Uh, they all kind of conflict with each other, they all use different definitions. Um, and there's a lot of ambiguity about what each is requiring. So the city, um, myself and the coenforcement officer are put into a very awkward position. Uh, because, you know, under city ordinance, it appears that we're required to make daycare centers. Uh, register as home occupation. But, you know, i- if this planning commission, uh, you know, wants to tell me what they want me to do. Uh, it's entirely reasonable to say that, uh, child daycare centers. With less than six wards is not a home occupation. Uh, which, like I said, is an entirely reasonable interpretation of that ordinance, uh, it would basically resolve the issue that I'm currently having. Um, but I, I felt it was above my pay grade to make that. Now, ultimately, at some point, we're gonna have to address, you know, the problems we have here. But at least if you guys give me an interpretation of what you think that ordinance meant, uh, it will address the issue that I'm currently having. So I can go into great detail, but that's the basis of it.
So, um, you, you want to dig into it tonight and try to find an answer to that, or do you just want general opinions from us?
Well, I mean, so again, uh, you know, I've got an issue, uh, I follow the law, it's written. And the law basically says, yeah, I forget the exact language, but, you know, child daycare centers are exempt from being registered as, as a home occupation. Why, under the zoning ordinance, it's not all jo- child, all child babysitting services or something like that. So I just have a problem with the words not matching up. Um, I think that's probably what was meant, um, but I don't feel like I get to make that call. So if you guys are comfortable with that interpretation, uh, then I'll turn to the multiple, uh, child daycare centers that we have in town and say. You know, I apologize, you're not actually a home occupation, we've, you know, we sorted it out. Um, and then not require them to actually register as home occupations. Uh, the only outstanding issue after that becomes, okay, you're gonna claim that you're, uh, you know, a child daycare center. Uh, do we then require them to submit uh proof of their licensure to show that they in fact are exempt from the ordinance? Which could be seen as a way of requiring them to, you know, um, not register, but at least provide proof of evidence. Kind of a touchy subject, it's a little weird. Oh, go ahead.
No, you go ahead, I don't want to monopolize this.
Um, so if we do change it, and it is daycare centers, they still have to register with the state and all that, right? That, that doesn't change any of the registering with the state and all that mess?
Correct, and I'm not asking you to change anything.
Okay.
All I'm asking you for today is whether, um, it's a reasonable interpretation of the home occupations ordinance. That when it says, you know, child daycare center definition A. Uh, that it would also include, or that they meant childcare center B, which is what it's actually under our ordinance.
Okay.
We'll, we'll work on changing things at a later date.
Alright, I just want to double check, because I didn't want.
Does anyone think it's not reasonable to make that assumption? It sounds like you're leaning towards that logically, one, a person may assume that.
Yeah, it, it, it makes total sense, um, but, you know, I have definitions, I have words. Um, and following the strict, you know, interpretation of the words, it should be registered, but, you know, if you compare the state law. Um, versus what it looks like they were attempting to do in this, in the local law, uh, those, it just does make sense that they did.
So if we, if we. What level, mech- mech- mechanism you need, straw poll, advice, a, a motion, I'm not sure what you're looking for. But in whatever way we, if we gave you that, um, does it end there? Do you need to go to the city council for more?
Oh, this will be on the city council agenda for two days from today. But the discussion that we had last time at the city council level, um, was basically what I'm presenting to you today, which is, it's probably what they meant. Um, but they also wanted to hear from the planning commission what you guys thought.
Okay, so this is just a recommendation from the planning mission?
Um, yeah, I, I don't say, I'm not gonna say you have to strictly make a recommendation of the city council. But, you know, I want to be, uh, told that I'm either right in my thought process, or that I'm totally wrong in my thought process. Before I take it to the city council.
I think we were looking for a recommendation from the planning commission, really.
Here's the big, so.
So, well, and, and it certainly wouldn't hurt if we gave you a positive recommendation. So, um, does anyone, um, have anything you'd like to add to that? Or add, or any questions you have beyond that?
Just for the record, Mr. Nixon, we're not supposed to be talking between ourselves, everything we say should be heard by public.
Oh, do we need to ask the voice in the sky, or is that something we can do between ourselves?
You're referring to Mr. Moore, right?
Yes.
Okay, um, I mean, I'm welcome to take Mr. Moore's opinion, but I, but it, it seems pretty simple, but.
Uh, if, if you would like me to volunteer my opinion, it would be that. Um, I think it is a reasonable interpretation to consider these exempt from the home occupation ordinance. The way that we have interpreted and implied the zoning act over the years is that. Uh, the family daycare homes, which are the in-home daycares with six or fewer children. Are exempt from zoning, they are permitted in any residential dwelling in your community, whether you want them there or not. So I think it's, I think it's a fair interpretation to say that those are not subject to your home occupations ordinance. Um, last I knew, the, the family daycare homes, which is six or fewer. Have to register with the state, but there's not, but there's not a license process. But the next two steps up, which would be a group childcare facility, which has seven to twelve kids, or a childcare center. Which would be like a, you know, preschool, basically, those do require a license from the state, and those would be subject to zoning. Although we note that a group childcare home does have some, there's some partial preemption in the act there that would go on, but. For the purposes of this discussion, I think that, um, you know, to follow the zoning act, it would make sense to interpret, uh, the child. Uh, family care facilities with six or fewer to be totally exempt from zoning, including your home occupation standards. Um, and I, I do think it would also make sense in those cases to just have them. Provide a copy of their registration paperwork, but with the state, so you know, um, where they are. And they're in fact registered and that they're there.
Thank you. So, um, for your recommendation, you had asked three questions on the memo that you sent. So that's why I wanted to make sure that we're giving you everything that you were looking for. Um, I, one was about, that we regulate less than six. I kind of, I can paraphrase here, should we regulate them? Do we, if we don't regulate them, should we require those, um, facility, or those home. Uh, daycares that have less than six, um, wards to self-identify, even if they're not being regulated? And then you'd also asked, do we need, uh, ordinance? To address it within ordinance? In the, in the memo that you sent me, based upon the notes that I wrote out here, but that's all that I remember, I don't have to pull the memo up again. So.
First, I don't feel the need to regulate, as long as they self-identify and have proof that they've been licensed with the state.
Well, it's a question of whether we even can, based on the state law.
Okay.
So I don't think we can, but we get to follow the local law.
Yeah, I would agree that you also don't have the authority to regulate those.
Operating intent, is that allowed?
Um, sorry.
Morrison.
Mr. Moore, did you have something to add?
I, I was just saying that I would agree that you probably do not have the authority to regulate family daycare homes in the city.
Um, and so the question of, do we ask them to self-identify, uh, came up at the city council, and there were some mixed opinions at the city council level. Um, technically, I don't think we need to, because all of the child daycare centers are, um, they're on a list that's available to the city. Um, it's more of a question of, you know, hey, you know, we noticed there's a lot of stuff going on here, why is that? It saves the city the stuff of having, having to go to the state and get the rest. But, you know, I, I guess I don't care one way or the other.
And then, as far as do we need to make a change in the ordinance? Sounds like we don't need to right now, but.
I did put the, uh, city of Warren's, uh, childcare uses ordinance in there. Um, which more directly follows what the state law says. Um, so I don't know how or why the city, the local city's ordinance was written the way it was. But it doesn't jive up with what the state law says, so submitted Warren one does. At least we have a guideline for how we could change it in the future if we want.
Um, so. Before I make any motion, or anyone makes a motion, I'm just kind of curious, where are we at with the requirement of self-identifying? If, even if they're not being regulated, do we ask if they're running daycare with less than six?
I mean, if there's already lists, we just need to eat the list. Right, I mean, there's a list available on the state, but. Not, not for less than six, I don't think. Is that the issue? I'm just making sure I understand this fully.
Yeah, I mean, I, I believe there's a list, uh, even six or less. Um, it's just a question of, hey, we see there's a bunch of toys in your front yard, what's going on? Oh, well, we have a child daycare center. Okay, great, let us know, you know, provide a copy of your license. Because, uh, there's also the question of, okay, if you're running a child daycare, daycare center, but you're not licensed. Now there's a safety issue of, well, you didn't get CPR class, and you don't know how to wash things, you know, change diapers, whatever. It's just saving the city a step. But like I said, either way, I think we could make it work.
The other, I mean, put away the other, um.
My opinion, if it's s- six or less, you know, we just, there, they would be exempt from the. The zoning there, I guess, just like Mr. Moore thought.
Do we, do we ask them to identify? Or just ignore it unless something comes up?
I would ignore it unless something comes up.
Aside, any opinions?
I would follow what Mr. Moore said, I would have them identify.
I did perform a quick Google search, and it turns out that you can just look them up with about three clicks and. There's about three dozen of them in the city, if you're just looking for the family daycare homes with one to six. At least they have a Cedar Springs address, some of those might be outside of the city.
In the Cedar Springs address, not in the city.
So that might include some of the surrounding townships, but again, it wouldn't be hard to, um. To figure out where those are, because they give us an address and everything, so we could map them out pretty easily and figure out where they are. We can do the same things for the larger facilities as well, but that's probably not necessary for this purpose.
I, I know it sounds, um, lazy, but, you know, it, it's so much easier for us just to say, hey, provide us with a copy of your license. I, I know it sounds, um, lazy, but, you know, it, it's so much easier for us just to say, hey, provide us with a copy of your license. Versus identifying, you know, a problem and then having to go back and find a list and then always at the right address and. I'm just trying to save myself a few minutes of time.
How common is this a problem?
Um. Yeah, I could talk about this for days, but really, um, if you're running a child daycare center, it's not being run well. Um, we don't need to address the child daycare portion of it. We need to address the parking on the front lawn and, and leaving stuff all over the place and junk. And, you know, the stuff that we can enforce against anybody, um, it's not necessarily tied to, um, whether they're operating a child daycare, daycare center. Um, I guess my concern is unlicensed child daycare centers are not following the safety requirements as imposed by the state. Um, and I find that, uh, the state is less than exempt, uh, stellar yet enforcing their laws.
What were the two terms again that we need to marry up? That the state has this definition and we have a different definition?
Off the top of my head, I, like I said, there, there's like thirty different terms.
Okay, cause I was going to try to give a recommendation that we, that we think you should, uh, uh, consider this as that. And that we, we agree that that's a correct assumption. So I just wanted to make sure I had the right language before I made that.
Going from, uh, something about home ba- home occupations, uh, to a daycare center?
I'm not sure I wanna, I'm not sure I wanna use specific terms. I don't wanna get it wrong and then.
Yes.
Um, are you, are basically what you're trying to do with this ordinance is clean it up?
So eventually I would like to clean up the ordinance.
Okay.
But again, for right now, all I'm looking for is, is it a reasonable interpretation that Mr. Moore has indicated? Uh, that the state law basically preempts and exempts. Child daycare centers of, of six or less from city control. Uh, which would then obviously exempt them from home occupations. That's really all I'm looking for.
Okay, so we, so if I just look in the right way to word it. So if we agree, uh, if I like the motion to recommend to the city council that, um, we agree, uh, with the states. I'm, help me again, I'm sorry.
That the state law preempts the city's home occupation ordinance.
The state law preempts the city's home occupation. Give a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? We attempt to take back the wasted time that we did after the last ten minutes, talk about it?
No, we had wasted time.
Can't do that. Okay, so in that case, all in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? The recommendations, uh, carries. Okay, uh, solar energy systems, item ten D.
Yeah, so, um, before we get into the so- solar energy systems, I would just also mention that. In addition to a number of solar energy systems, we've seen pop up in the city over the last year or so. Uh, we've had a lot of kind of natural gas generator installations, so we might wanna address those at the same time. Um, but right now, we have virtually nothing in our ordinances that address these. Um, and by and large, um, I basically have said, well, if it's flush to the roof, then it's good to go. So I don't know if the, uh, planning commission wants to do something different, if they want to at least codify kind of that rule so that I have something to. Fight with if, if, you know, somebody wants to object to that. Um, but again, I don't wanna get into it today. I just wanna make sure you guys are aware of this as an issue. Um, and that we'll be addressing it at some point in the year. Take any comments you might have.
I think being in town, your only option is really to be on a roof. With such a small lot, I mean, I don't think we're gonna allow big backyards filled up with panels.
So somebody might say they wanna do that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and while I would say, no, thank you, it would be nice to have it written down as well.
Yep.
That's actually not what I was really talking about. When I say flush with a roof, you know, you've got a roof that does this.
Yeah.
I want the solar panel to do that.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Is, say, if you are a north-facing roof, you don't now have your, you know, system like that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that'd be bad.
It would just look weird. Uh, so I think flush it looks okay. If you guys have driven past the independent bank, you'll see that they have recently installed.
Yep, they're doing it today, you know?
So, um, what about an accessory building that had been addressed one way or the other? For instance, my garage is, my garage isn't attached, but it has electric. If I, and I don't have good sun exposure most of my house, but my south side of my garage does.
Sure. And so same thing, we could, I don't even know if it has to be delineated between primary and accessory. Um, I would be okay with it just being flushed to a roof. As opposed to, you know, some other angle or a, a solar ray in a field somewhere. Um, although the city might wanna do that at the West Street location, that's a different question, but I, I just think it's appropriate to get us down, uh, on paper.
Okay.
Mr. Moore, do you have any thoughts or comments?
Um, not particularly. They, so we've written a bunch of these ordinances that allow for rooftop solar and in some cases. Kind of the backyard solar where it's an independent structure. Um, in those cases, we've imposed, uh, minimum lot size limitations, size limitations, height limitations and things like that. So that, um, you know, in, in some communities, they've wanted to further enable backyard solar as on a standalone structure. Obviously, in, in Cedar Springs, most of the lots are gonna be too small to make that a viable option for the most part. Um, as far as the larger so- solar farms go, uh, the ones that I've been hearing about are huge, you know, anywhere from s- five, six hundred to two, three thousand acres. Um, so again, we're not, the utility scale solar, we could certainly prepare an ordinance for that. You don't know if there is much, um, land that would have the area available to accommodate, uh, something that would be. You know, buildable in that sense, but, um, otherwise, totally agree on mounting them flush on the roof. Um, there's some basic regulations that we could put in place, require zoning compliance permits and so forth. That's all pretty common stuff to do and to help with that.
Mr. Moore thought he was gonna have a nice, easy evening, and I keep making him earn his paycheck.
That's okay. That's why I'm here.
Uh, which I guess moves us on to item eleven. Open discussion for issues not on the agenda. Uh, under correspondence, item A. We have, uh, a calendar that's always there and then, uh, I believe we saw this public comment or we, we.
Heard it at the last.
We heard it at the last, yes. And then, um, which now brings us to B, staff comments, city manager.
Um, so I was only aware of this Shannon Hager public comments, but it sounded like there were other public comments. Something submitted at the beginning of the meeting that.
Just a few minutes ago, before the meeting, there were five letters of support that were submitted.
I, I haven't seen those. Um, before, whatever it's worth, um, you know, I appreciate the work you guys put in today. Uh, that site plan was not optimal. I think you guys did a great discussion on kind of what you wanted to see, so I appreciate that. Uh, also appreciate you bearing with both myself and Mr. Moore, um, you know, obviously. The last couple of months have been extremely busy here in the city, um, you know, in my time. Been very limited. So I, I would like to move some of these things forward. I just didn't have time to do it this month. Or Mr. Moore will complete everything between now and the next meeting. And, uh, yeah, I think we're moving this forward, so I appreciate the work you guys do.
Uh, city clerk comment?
Um, I do not have much. Just please do enjoy some nice weather coming up. Summer is short, so get out there and enjoy it for me.
I was just gonna say real quick, I won't be here on October fourth.
Well, can you wait your turn?
I'll be in Cancun.
We're, we're about to go to the planning commission members and I can recognize Mr. Rollington first, so there you go. You're not gonna be here October fourth?
Will not be here October fourth.
Okay. Any other planning commission members have a? Um, thank you for, as, as we just mentioned, thank you for, uh, uh, plowing through some of these difficult concepts and making the hard decisions. I'm sure you'll all be thanked by every member of the city leader with a Jimmy John's sandwich in their hands as, as they do so. Or they'll throw it at you if they don't like how we decided that either one. Um, report to the city council representative. I think I know who that is.
Um, just so you know, it, we had a longer discussion on, yes, on the, um, childcare, which, um, we tend to have. Um, that's why we kind of dispense it down here, so we just needed a little, I don't, just don't think that sometimes we understand what city manager's going for. And we found out, so that's good.
Send the message.
Well, they send it back and they might, we might get it up there at the council. So, um. That's, um, a lot of it. Um, I, we're not working on. A lot, are we? I can't remember.
Your meeting in two days?
Yeah.
Oh, it's gonna be a six-hour meeting.
Well, coming up, but I'm saying from before. I'm not talking about going forward. It's gonna be a six-hour meeting? Great. Write down eight. If he thinks it's six, it's gonna be eight. Yeah. But other than that, thanks for your help. I mean, all the stuff that you guys do helps us in the long run figure things out, so we appreciate it.
Okay, and then, uh, takes us to the report with planning consultant. Do you have anything you'd like to add, Mr. Moore?
Uh, just thanks for your patience with me the last couple of months between, um, my, you know, medical issues and now, of course. After avoiding it for two and a half years, getting stuck with COVID last week, um, it's been, uh, helpful to have, uh. You know, have, have you guys be able to work with me and, like, get the work done, so I appreciate it and I look forward to seeing you in person next month.
Hope you get better from everything involved and by far, this has not been our first Zoom interaction with people over this pandemic, so I fully understand.
Yep, thank you.
For over a year. So, um. With that, I guess we're adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Better, we'll see you next month.
Thank you. I'm looking forward to it.